Good evening, welcome to the January 29th meeting of the Board of Education. Call please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mrs. Michael?
Here.
Mrs. Zirbey?
Here.
Please hand to the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no one to speak for public participation. So we'll go right into our presentation today.
Thank you for having me. My name's Christine Robbins and I'm with the Ohio School Boards Association as a consultant in the Board of Administration Services Division. Also, served on the Westerville Board of Education, so if you're familiar with Central Ohio School Districts, Westerville is northeast. I grew up in that community. It was important to me to give back by serving on the Board of Education. Served two terms and during that time, I think it was my second term, I accepted a position as Vice President Chief of Staff at Otterby University, which is also in Westerville, and then decided not to run for a third term. But certainly enjoyed the opportunity to serve. At the time that my father moved us to Westerville when I was a little girl, we were, he told us, moving out in the country. And there were maybe 14,000 people in the Westerville area and now there are close to 15,000 students in the Westerville School District. So we were, as I said, ninth largest in the state of Ohio at that time. But certainly understand the challenges that you face and the unique responsibility that you've accepted as a Board of Education member when you decided to step up and run. Want to start by asking you to introduce yourselves, if you would, and just tell me a little bit about what you do and how long you've been on the board. And I know we have some new, fairly new folks here as well. And then what's your why? Why is it that you've decided to step into this role, to accept this responsibility? Who would like to start?
I'm Anna. I've been on the board for 10 years. I'm a teacher, my real job, and my wife is the kids, my kids and other kids.
Great.
Thank you.
Does that make you next?
I guess so. I'm Katie. I've been on the board for a couple of weeks. I am also a teacher and I have young kids in the district. So I just felt like it was important to serve for the kids and my kids.
Where do you teach?
North Oakstead.
Okay. Very good.
I'm Corey. I just resigned after my third term.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I got involved with this because, like you said, you want to make a difference and you want to put your talents to the table.
Mm-hmm. Great.
I'm Heidi. I've been on board for two years, going into my third year. I am a product of public schools and I'm a public school supporter.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm Rick Mack. I've been on the board also two years, slightly different path. Law's got appointed and had to just rerun again.
Okay. Great.
So I am a retired teacher from the district, I'm a special ed department head and coach. And serving the community, I've served in the district for 40 years. In the climate that's there, just thought it's good to step up and what can be a totally same voice for the kids, for the staff, for the community.
Okay, great.
I'm Jo in the treasure. Been doing this 17 years now. The why. I got into this, I started as a state auditor, so it went being a state auditor, seeing what the treasures did, I decided I wanted to go that path. I never, I wanted to be a teacher back in the day, but I wanted to be like high level math. And so I went to the good kids. I've been all the calculus and stuff.
All kids.
Right. I know. I went to calculus and then I thought, now let's go for, you know, accounting. And then getting into here, it is, it's to help the kids. I indirectly help them.
You do.
And any way I can to ensure they get the best education possible, so.
Great.
What do we have?
Thank you. So I'm Tracy. This is my fifth year, started my fifth year in the district. I've been in education, I taught for, taught administrative since my, over my, more than 33 years. So I go back to my, my teaching is a passion for kids. I don't think I ever thought I would ever sit in this seat. And I would say, I speak specifically to my wife and my sister, because I came from another large district, I've always wanted to work in larger districts. When this position came open, I felt like it was the perfect fit for me. There's so much that this district has to offer, the diversity in the district, just the opportunities in the district, and it's always about kids. Always about kids.
Great. Thank you. I come from a family of educators as well, and when I think about my why, I think, you know, the kids obviously, and wanting to make a difference in the community. I have three children, so at the time I was on the board, I had one in high school, one in middle school, one in elementary school, so they were kind of spread out. But my parents did not go to college, so I'm a first generation college student, and education, education, education was all, they really talked about. My dad, after graduating high school, went right into the Navy, mother followed him shortly after that. And she's probably the one where I got my love for community and community service. Always on the PTA, Director of Talent Shows. We had a teacher strike when I was a senior in high school. She was the one pulling everyone together and was facilitating a town hall. So, you know, again, giving back to our community. And at the time that I ran, I was very involved in Westerville and was Executive Director of Leadership Westerville. And started hearing more and more about concerns about our school district. And much of it was because people didn't feel like they knew what was happening. They, while I believe the Board of Education attempted to communicate as much as possible and share information, there was just a lack of community engagement, so I thought that's where I might be able to help out. And my background also is in human resource management, so I thought, you know, I could come in and I could better understand how things are working since the majority of your resources go to personnel, to salaries and to benefits, so. So today, we're going to try to cover a lot quickly in our time together, and if there are some things that I don't touch on that you are curious about or want to go into a little bit further, we can talk about it toward the end of our time together. We're going to start out by talking about the characteristics of an effective board member. So as an individual, what are key characteristics, and then move into the qualities of a successful team. And you have, you know, the board, we have to remember, is one entity, and it existed before you joined, and it will exist when you're gone. And it only can operate as one entity rather than individuals. So you're at a point right now with new board members and recently re-elected board members that you are forming a team again, and you have to go through that process, because any time there's someone new that steps into the board, onto the board, you are operating as a team and will become a new team. Good evening. We'll talk a little bit about governance, and that's governance versus administration. So the board's goal as a governing body, and then goals and responsibilities. So I want, as we're building a new team, I do have one exercise that I wanted to do quickly, and I'm going to ask you to pass this around and to take a point. Once it makes its way all the way around, I will tell you what we're going to be doing with that.
I'm supposed to have to be able to read?
You know, when I gather those, I've discovered quickly, I need to be reading glasses.
See?
Okay, so it does have a date, it has a year. And if you can, I'd like you to look at the year that's on your point, and I'm going to ask you to share what you were doing that year and a story from that year that you remember when you think about that particular year.
I'll start.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, please.
My year, I think I gotta go back and look, is 2000, I think it says 2004. Close enough. Year 2004, I think the most significant thing of that year is when my first son was born.
Okay.
So I think, personally, are you asking for personal or for professional?
Yes, absolutely. Anything that you remember, you know, what you were doing and, yeah, absolutely.
Personally, my son was born professionally, and I was a middle school teacher.
Okay.
I can remember it.
What did you teach?
I taught middle school ELA and math.
Okay.
What district? Mayfield.
Who's next?
I'll go next.
All right.
I have 1999, which was a really important year for me. I graduated college that year, and like you, I was a first generation college graduate, and I entered law school that year too. And so had, and then continue to have sort of imposter syndrome, being a first generation college student. Do I belong here? Can I really do this? So that, you know, no profession yet, just entering my professional life at that point.
Okay, great. Excellent.
I just realized I'm off by 10 years.
I was gonna say, your son can't be 2004. It's 1990.
2004. Wow.
That's much.
That sounds like, boo. Don't ask me to think 2004. I'm on 1994.
It was a good year.
It was 2001. I always go, I remember in third grade, they'd figure out how old you were going to be in the year 2000, and thinking, 41, that's, you know, oh, what I would give for 41 and 42. And so there's 42, teaching at Mid Park, I've been there a number of years, had recently become the special ed department head, and also started my track coaching career.
Okay.
Katie's dad had invited me to be on the staff.
That's great. You're extra that.
You know, so it was just, it was a very good year. A lot of good things started, you know, a lot of opportunities that impact students in a lot of different ways, so a very good year.
Mine's 2016, and I can't think of anything special. I've already been teaching for a long time, I've already been on the board, I already operated my children's memorial, so.
You had a lot going on, no wonder you can't remember.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's true. These are times. Forty's are crazy.
All right.
I have 2018. So at that time, I had a three-year-old and a one-year-old. And so it was really chaotic. And I don't, I don't remember any specific stories, it's just, it's like a blur, like a three-year-old and one-year-old together, it was just.
Were you working outside the home at that time?
Yes, I was a teacher, I've been in North Oakstead my whole career. Actually, that was the year that they had me teach at the high school for part of the day. It was just that one year, so, yeah.
So now, I have 2019. So now, the benefit of having gone last was that I was able to scroll through my Google Chrome and see the highlight reel of what happened in 2019. So that was the year we got our current dog, Eddie.
Okay, Eddie.
Eddie, our great dane, came into our lives. Everybody knows Eddie. Yes, Eddie is infamous for being a sweetheart and good with people. So that was the big, for the year. Of course, I was on the board at that point. The other pictures that came up in my memories was the construction of high school. We were able to actually walk through the high school, and it was raw, you know, the walls were open, and, but we were able to begin to visualize the space, it was starting to come together. So that was, I would say, for me, that was a monumental point in that year.
Absolutely.
But, you know, my children were born out of the district by that time and in college, and little did we know that just a year, you know, 2020, we're bringing them all back home.
Actually, can I add something?
Sure.
Corey was saying about the construction, 2016 was when you passed the levy, wasn't it? Yeah, it was. On November 2016.
Yeah.
We built a new high school. And now it's been here for 40 years and ready to.
Well, going through that process and sharing a little bit about, you know, the year that you selected that was on the coin, hopefully you got to know a little bit more about one another, maybe learned something that you didn't know about one another, but it's all an important part of forming a team and being able to connect and communicate and build those relationships for the kids and for moving the district forward. To start, we want to talk about five key characteristics, and I would say not only of effective Board of Education members, but effective leaders in general. So we're talking about competence, collaboration, commitment, cooperation, and communication. And when we talk about competence, we're defining that as the ability to do something successfully and the ability to have sufficient knowledge to make good decisions and use evidence. And what I'd like you to do is think about this, these questions, as we move forward this evening. So ask yourself, as a board member, am I willing and able to understand and abide by district policy? That's something, when I first joined the board and talking to the superintendent, I asked, you know, what can I do? I want to be a good board member. And I doubt that very many people run for the Board of Education to be a bad board member, but to be a contributor, to be a great board member and be part of a team. And what he said to me was, ask questions, just ask a lot of questions. And I think, as you're all finding out and as you know, it's so much more complex than perhaps it seems on the outside. So once I, even though I grew up in the district, there was so much more to learn about the operations of the district. So am I willing to ask questions? Am I willing to ask for evidence to make decisions? Am I willing to communicate professionally and fairly with members of the public on behalf of the district and understand and abide by district policy? Yes?
I remember when I first got elected, right before my first meeting, Tracy was the superintendent at the time, I was Mike, and we were talking on the phone, and I asked her to keep me print out all the policies for me, because we had four of those at the time.
Yeah.
And she's like, well, not really. That's when I started to really understand the.
And that's a good place to start.
Yeah.
Yeah, is to understand. And a good question, if you're starting to go down a path, talking about a topic, good question is, what's our policy at this point? Doesn't mean, policy can't change, but, you know, what's the current policy and let's talk about whether it still makes sense. So then we're talking about collaboration, and collaboration works much better than combattiveness, as we know, but we're defining this as the action of working with others to produce or to create something. So ask yourself, as a board member, am I willing and able to work as a member of the board team? And the district leadership team, which is your team, the superintendent and the treasures team, and with committee members, do you have board committees or are they superintendent committees? What's your structure like at this point?
Board meetings.
Board committees. Board committees, okay.
I think they call them board committees, but they don't really function as board committees.
Okay. Are they appointed by the board or?
Yes.
Okay.
The audit committees really do all the, or the financial.
But it makes a difference in terms of how you notice the public about meetings, if it's a super, you all know, if it's a superintendent committee or not. But are you willing to collaborate to be able to move toward group consensus and decisions that are in the best interest of all students and the district as a whole? The third is commitment. So we're talking about being dedicated to a cause. You have dedicated yourselves to running for the Board of Education and to the district. So as a board member, ask yourself, am I willing and able to attend all committee meetings and board meetings as scheduled? Certainly there are things that come up in life that you may not be able to make them all, but you made the commitment to add this responsibility to your schedule. Are you willing and able to be visible at district events to the extent manageable? Our district was or is 51 square miles with 91,000 residents. We, at the time, I, three high schools, we had a fairly new high school. At the time I joined the board, they had just opened, so we made a point of trying to divvy up, you know, the events. Some of us were involved in Rotary, some of us were involved in other organizations, but just being present and being able to attend events and be visible. People want to see you, they want to approach you, they want to be able to ask questions of you, so it's important to be visible at these events and share representation as much as you can. Cooperation, we're talking about the process of working with one another. So as a board member, asking yourself, am I willing and able to work with board colleagues in discussions related to policy and decision making? Now, we talk about being a team and what makes an effective team. That doesn't mean there's not going to be conflict. Conflict is good, in my opinion. You want differences of opinions, you don't want to become a board that's a rote board where everything's a 5-0 vote all the time. It's good to be able to bring your perspectives forward, but do it in a way that's respectful and do it in a way that focuses on the issue. We've seen way too many situations, unfortunately, where things become combative and if the focus then becomes more personal than on the issue. So I would encourage you to think about that. Casting your votes, am I willing to cast votes based on evidence and discussions, not based on a small population within the district that might be the vocal minority? And then work with the board colleagues. So going forward, if I was the descending vote or one of two descending votes, if the majority is to move forward with a decision that I didn't agree with, then it's your obligation as a member of the Board of Education to move forward and support the consensus and the role of the board. And then finally, communication, and this is a big one, we'll talk a little bit about in more detail later, but ask yourself if you're willing to respond to fellow board members and administrators in a timely fashion. You're going to be getting a lot more email, phone calls, texts. Those of you who've been on the board, as veterans know that, that there's a lot coming at you, so make sure that you're responsive. Am I willing to listen? Listening is a key element of being on the Board of Education. Most people listen to reply rather than to deeply understand, and as a board member, it's really your responsibility to listen and then not jump into solving issues, but gathering information, bringing it to the superintendent, bringing it to the treasurer, and then being able to figure out how you can solve a certain issue that might be brought to your attention with their help as the CEO and the CFO of the district. Make sure that you're transparent in the way that you work with one another. Transparency is something that's always an issue if people begin to have meetings of two or phone calls with only two or three and not sharing all information. So making sure that you are transparent in all of your board meetings. And then confidentiality is important when it comes to executive sessions. There are six reasons to go into executive session, and the information that's in, that's discussed in executive session is confidential. There, unfortunately, were times where I would be in an executive session and before I got home, somebody knew what had been discussed in executive session. So that could create all sorts of issues legally as well. So Dr. Robert Marzano is an educational researcher, somebody you are familiar with, I'm sure, as educators, been, you know, in the field of education for many, many, many years. And he says, effective school boards lead as a united team. So that's what we're trying to achieve, leading as a united team, and that's along with the superintendent and with the treasurer, who are part of your team. And leading from respective roles, so you understand what your roles are, you want to collaborate and you want to trust one another to be able to make decisions on behalf of the district. And these are some keys in terms of effective teams and some of the key characteristics. One of the things that other districts have done is to establish norms. I don't know if you're familiar with, in other worlds where you work, developing norms. And there's something on your website from 2016, if I have it handy, but it did have a, yeah, is that something that you currently use or refer back to?
I don't really refer back to it since we created it.
So it may be something that can help center you on identifying, you know, are these currently the norms? Let me see if I can find it quickly, I meant to pull that out of my notebook and circulate it if you're not familiar with it, but I just printed a copy, yeah. So Board of Education guiding principles, similar as norms. So it talks about vision, structure, accountability. So are these the norms by which you operate currently? If not, you could have an opportunity to look at them, change them, improve them, or just, you know, reaffirm them, that this is the way you want to work with one another. So going through that process, I think, helps to develop trust and understanding of how you're going to commit to decisions, how you're going to hold one another accountable, and ultimately, how you're going to focus on achievement of collective results. It's on the board.
Have we, have we? I don't think so.
Okay.
Can you make a copy?
So you did say you did that as a board in 2016?
Yeah. January 2016. And it was based on a lot of things we found from OSBA and OSBA.
Great.
And then shortly thereafter is when we created the board handbook as well, as we get to have it though.
Yeah, that's important to have as well. So as she's making copies, then it's, since we don't really have time to do that this evening, but it's another exercise that you can do if you need help facilitating it or just do it yourselves, then it helps to kind of center the team going forward. So when we talk about high functioning boards, we're talking about boards who refer to a shared vision. So if you have a district vision, a mission, core values, the guiding principles we just talked about, that's where I went, in addition to policy, when tough decisions were needed to be made, is to understand, is this decision aligning with, with the, this is not, or something. Are these decisions that we're about to make, are they going to align with the vision of the district? We talked about the importance of working to maintain a climate of trust and openness with one another, respecting one another in the rules. You have a president and a vice president, so we'll talk a little bit about responsibilities of those roles, communicating honestly and in a timely manner, valuing diversity of thought. Again, you know, you're not always going to agree, and that's a good thing. It's the way that you disagree that's important, and then ultimately, someone may bring a different perspective or a different idea, and especially someone who's new to the board, and it's important for you to listen and to consider and to value the diversity of thought and opinion. And then making decisions based on the greater good. So as we have worked with, there's over 700 boards of education in the state of Ohio, over 500 brand-new board members selected for the first time during this past cycle. So we've worked with like 3,500, you know, board members, and, you know, these are the things that we've seen when we have identified high functioning boards, important for us to remember. When we talk about governance, we're focusing on governance versus administration. So governance is that 30,000-foot view, and that's the priority for the Board of Education. So it's coming together to determine the direction and make decisions on behalf of the school district, and you are responsible for overseeing a system of policies, regulations, ethical guidelines and practices to hold the board and the administration accountable. And that's for the benefit of the community and for all stakeholders. There are five things in the Ohio Revised Code that are identified in terms of roles and responsibilities of a Board of Education. You have two employees, and it's important to remember that. You have a superintendent and you have a treasurer. Everyone else reports either to the superintendent or all the way up through the superintendent or to the treasurer. So these are the two that you want to work with and that you want to hold accountable through evaluation process, through communication and through respecting the chain of command. You also are responsible for approving the annual budget and appropriations, providing needed safe and appropriate facilities, and then the necessary finances for the district's operations. So this is what's in the law. From a practical perspective, you know, we've talked about policy, you have a responsibility to know your policies, to refer to them as you're making decisions, and then to adopt, approve, and ultimately adhere to all policies of, for the governments of the district. You also might spend time establishing board goals, so these aren't goals for the district, these are goals for you as a board. Have you done that in the past where you've said, you know, this year as a, as a board, we want to improve the way we communicate, so we're going to do some professional development or something along those lines? Or as a board, we want to review policies in this section together. So those are the kinds of goals that you can establish and set some objectives as well, and hold one another accountable to those. Protocols, there are. Protocols, there are likely some established protocols that are in existence that maybe new board members or newer board members aren't familiar with. And that might be communication or contributing to setting the agenda. Can you think of any protocols that are in place as a Board of Education member that you might want to share with some of the newer folks?
Asking questions ahead of time.
Okay, that's a good example.
When you know what we're getting the agenda on Wednesday, we can schedule time on Friday for a meeting one day.
Yeah. So it's an expectation and that standard. We would review the information that we received and not wanting to throw anyone under the bus or surprise anyone, but if I knew the questions that I was going to ask at the meeting, then I would let the superintendent, I would let the president know, I would oftentimes let my other board members know, just expect me to ask about this and here's why. And then that way, it gives you an opportunity to be able to address it, so you're not surprised. So that's a perfect example of a protocol.
It's also important for us to get those answers ahead of time, but also for the public to see us asking those questions.
That's right. It's all about discussion. And too often, boards come in, go through the agenda, vote, and there's not discussion. So that's very important. That's for transparency and for communication and for building credibility with the community and trust. The superintendent is going to bring recommendations to you, so you will consider, you may approve or reject the recommendations based on what you have evaluated and the data that you've asked for. And it's important also to realize that one of your practical board responsibilities is to provide information to the public. Some boards have a formal way of doing that. We actually had a board report done after every meeting that went out, and it was as important internally, like to all the teachers and the staff, to know what was going on, what was decided at the board. And it was something because we had a communication department, the communication manager was at the board meeting, took notes, and would put together, it was more of a bullet-pointed kind of thing, so it wasn't an elaborate report, but it really helped with communication. So if that's something you don't do, you might want to consider that as a way to get information out to the community.
Do you have to sort of just take their... Again, because we use board docs, do you have to just push after the board docs after, basically our notes after the board meeting? But it takes a couple of weeks to do that, unfortunately.
As minutes?
Yeah. Like I'm thinking...
Well, you list all, you put all of your minutes on your website regardless, right?
Yeah. But that's not timely.
No.
That's the bad thing about that.
Yeah.
That's not the timely. So like what kinds, I'm just trying to think of...
I think the video of the...
Yeah, the live show.
You know, it's searchable. It's easy, they're searchable based on the...
Copy good.
Yeah.
I wonder if part of it could be prepared even in advance. We already know what we're going to be discussing and just highlighting the things that will remain. How many districts do it? One in particular, I think in, you know, North and South Carolina, and I noticed that because they're blue and orange like we are. It just comes up on my Facebook, and they send like a flyer looking thing on paper, I mean digitally.
Right.
That says, just like you said, bullet points of what happened at the meeting, just the important things.
Yeah, and then at the end, reference of the meetings, the full meeting minutes will be published.
Or you can do the video.
Yeah, with a video. So I can send you an example, one that I have, if you'd be interested in seeing that. But it was, like you said, some of it can be prepared ahead of time, actually. And I took that practice when I worked at Otterbine. I was the liaison to our Board of Trustees, and we too heard that we didn't communicate enough and people didn't know what was going on. And so I knew based on the agenda that there were certain things they were going to vote on, and so I could actually prepare it and then add to it after the meeting or during the meeting before it was reviewed and approved and sent out. And people really appreciated that. We know how fast news can travel, so waiting for the minutes sometimes is too late.
Can I ask one question on the subject of setting goals? Will you be talking about OSBA's board self-assessment, or is that a tool that you recommend for boards?
Yes, I was going to share the standards. I think I included that. If not, I can send them along. But that's something that we offer. There are five standards that we ask, we have, care of the boards to be able to assess their performance. And the process is each of you would be able to assess your own individual thinking about how you're doing in each of those standards, and then come together as a board and see what the results were. Because there may be some of you who think, you know, if there's a standard of related to governance in particular, how are we doing? Some of you may think, yeah, we're doing great. And others may say, hmm, not so much. So it's an opportunity then to open up that dialogue. The way this table breaks it down is into the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Education and the superintendent. So main focus of the board, the board is really the keeper of the vision and the mission of the district. So the board also is going to focus on goals. If you have strategic goals, do you have a current strategic plan? So that's something that can really ground you again as a board and as a district. So questions that the board, the board's going to ask, things like, you know, what are we trying to accomplish with this initiative that we're being asked to undertake? Why are we going in this direction? How much is it going to cost? Might be financial resources, human resources, but those are the higher-level questions. And again, the tools are looking at the mission, looking at the vision, looking at the goals, various policies, strategic plan. And then, of course, your method of making decisions is through voting. And when you look at the superintendent, the superintendent's really focused more on objectives, so the day-to-day operations of the district. And you're going to be asking questions like, how are we going to accomplish this? By whom? Who's going to lead this project? And you're going to focus on strategies and procedures and regulations. So if you have, where you have the bigger policy, you have administrative guidelines, and that's where kind of the differentiation lies between your role and responsibility and that of the board. Certainly, the board can make suggestions, as can the superintendent. Sometimes the lines get a little blurry, but really, the responsibility of the board is to stay at that high level and to be able to trust your superintendent and your treasurer to manage the day-to-day work. So strategy versus tactics is how we like to describe that. So this just breaks it down into four key areas. So policymaking, hiring and evaluation of the superintendent and treasurer communicators. So your communicators between the district and the community and between one another, and then serve as advisors. And so you're advisors to the superintendent, to the treasurer, and to other board members, but you're also advisors to the community. The community elected you, and again, you want to share information. Important to make sure that the information that you're sharing is accurate, as we all know. If I was going to go to a Rotary meeting and speak about the district, typically, I would bring the treasurer and/or the superintendent along. I would also make sure that any message I was going to be delivering was going to be reviewed by the superintendent and the treasurer, because I would not want to misspeak. I may think I really know a lot about the district, but there's certainly some things that are deeper into the organization I might not be familiar with. So important to make sure you're on message. Any questions so far in what we've covered? Pretty straightforward. Again, refresher for some of you, new information for others. There are just some sample questions as a policymaking body. These are policy or governance-oriented questions, so things that you may ask. And this can also promote discussion at your board meetings to make sure that you are putting the questions out there for people to know that you're asking. Does this decision make financial sense for our district? Do we have the resources to be able to make this decision pay off? Have we done our due diligence? What are the other options? What are the other alternatives? And then from a process-oriented approach, process really belongs to the superintendent and to the treasurer. So again, if you have a new program or you have a project, superintendent's going to determine who's best to lead among her team. And if you do a pilot project, if you have multiple buildings, what building's going to go first? How's the decision going to affect student schedules? So all of those things that kind of trickle down in order to make sure that you are getting those policy or those process-oriented questions answered. Things that sometimes come to the board that may not necessarily belong in the realm of the board. The last question, three buses are in need of major repair? Do we repair or replace? You know, that's certainly a recommendation. That's something that you, if you have a transportation director or someone who would help you with that. But that's more operational than the financial support, the resources certainly the board would control and manage, but that's within the realm of operations. So we talked about the questions, and that's to lead to having these good trade-off discussions, again publicly for transparency. So as you're making decisions, these are some of the questions that you might consider as you go through the process. We did break down, there's four different areas, and we broke it down. I'm not going to necessarily read through all of these, but when it comes to curriculum and instruction, there's a line that delineates the responsibilities of the Board of Education and the superintendent. So I would ask, you know, if you take a look at these, and particularly, Tracy, does this make sense to you? You know, the board is focused on the vision, adopting or changing programs as necessary, but typically recommended by the superintendent. You're not just going to come in and say, I want to change this program. But there may be, I think of an example of one of my colleagues on the board who heard of a program called Challenge Day you might be familiar with, and it was very important to her. She was passionate about it. She was an educator. She brought it forward, but there was discussion, obviously, with the superintendent before it would be brought to the board for consideration. Achievement data, it's our responsibility as a board to make sure we're reviewing the achievement data and messaging to the community what that means, and asking and utilizing data to make decisions. So from the superintendent's perspective, you're going to be the advisor to the board on curriculum and instruction. And certainly, you have others, I would imagine, that are, and you're experts that report to you. And you're going to make sure that you assign staff to meet the instructional requirements. So again, kind of going deep into the daily operations. Anything that looks out of whack or anything you would add? Does that make sense?
I just want to, like, I love, I don't think I've ever seen it just laid out like it's on you. No. I think this is what we do. This is how, this is how we operate, just to see it lined up.
Yeah. And it's not always black and white. I mean, there's a little blurriness too, and especially for those here who are in the field of education. You've got expertise to be able to offer. You were in the district for so many years, but then it's also difficult where you have to kind of step out when teachers may want to come to you and say, I'm going to, I would rather speak with you than talk to the superintendent or to the building principal. And that's kind of tough, because you have to redirect. And then you can follow up and make sure that it was handled properly. When it comes to human resources or personnel, you are responsible for voting to employ staff based on the recommendation of the superintendent. You do have the opportunity through policy to approve criteria to be used in hiring. If you have questions about that, there are HR policies that are in place. And then, real important task of the board, as we saw, that's actually codified into laws, that you conduct the annual evaluation of the superintendent and treasurer. So if you don't have that process in place, that's something too that we can help you with. There are superintendent standards, there are treasurer standards. There is not a specific form or process that is dictated by the state, but there are standards to use that make a lot of sense. Anything, when you look at the superintendent's column, that might not make sense for you?
We actually redid our evaluation process.
Oh, good.
Heather edited that up here before last, based on OSBA's recommendations.
Good.
And their input as well, and revised it a little bit after the first time.
Well, we see it as a, it is a process. My experience in human resource management, from the time I first started down in that career, down that path, most of the evaluations were retrospective and once a year, and you're looking back over a full year and not really helpful. A lot of times, you wouldn't get feedback until you had your performance revealed. And then you sit down, and then you're told, well, six months ago, I really didn't like the way you handled the situation. How is that helpful? Right? So the processes now that are more proactive are ongoing. So there aren't any surprises that you have more than one conversation a year. You have a formal review, certainly, or a formal evaluation or assessment, but you do have those conversations throughout the year. The treasurer's on this one, in terms of breaking down responsibilities. So obviously, the board's responsible for establishing priorities that align with the vision and the mission and the strategic goals. You approve and adopt, and I would add, understand that budget as much as you can. It's very complicated. And I thought when I joined the board, I could really help there. And then there's things like FAM revenue and all sorts of things that you don't even know, you know, as a community member that exists with the complexity of school funding. So you likely give reports, I don't know if you do on a monthly basis, or, you know. So again, asking your expert CFO questions, that's what she's here for. So making sure that you do ask questions and understand as much as possible. Contracts, you likely in policy have some level that you, the superintendent, treasurer can approve contracts up to, you know, $10,000, $20,000 before it would come to the Board of Education. And then there's always the annual audit report that you're responsible for reviewing. And it looks like you enjoy that piece of your job too, from your smiles. It's a lot. So the treasurer, again, the treasurer's the CFO and is responsible for preparing detailed budget based on the priorities, presenting the budget, making sure that there's rationale attached to the budget, and overseeing the monthly financial presentation we talked about, and then acting as a financial, if you do have that financial committee of the board, that treasurer's the liaison. Do you serve as legislative liaison too?
No.
No?
But usually, financial topics, all stuff in, that's all in the tax reform that's going through right now and stuff.
Okay, and then collective bargaining. What's the situation in this district with associations? Do you have a teachers' association? Do you have more than one bargaining unit? Okay. So you know, every three years or however long your contract is, that this is going to be coming along. So this is another key responsibility of the board, just recognize the bargaining units that exist. One of the first things I asked for when I joined the board was I wanted to see the contracts, I wanted to understand the contracts, so as for those agreements. And you would have some discussion as a board in terms of what priorities are along with your superintendent and treasurer. Negotiations, how's that handled now with, is the Board of Education involved in terms of being at the table or no? And that's best, that's a best practice, is to step away so that, you know, you are not directly involved at the table. Of course, you're involved, you're going to ultimately approve decisions that are made here. And the superintendent, you're going to be more in that support role for the board during negotiations, certainly as key advisor, if you have recommendations for the board and things that you want to see changed or added, and then making sure, you know, contract administration's a whole other thing, so making sure that you are administering and fully are compliant with the contracts. So just kind of in summary for what we talked about with governance, best practices, again, remember that your superintendent's your CEO, like in any organization, and your treasurer's your CFO, your two employees. Important to respect the will of the board, important to respect the chain of command. And if there are chain of command issues, then it's important to have those discussions, you know. It's a tricky situation as a board member, because I did have people come to me and say, you know, you're newly elected, a teacher in the district, I'd like to go have coffee with you. Now, I'm not going to say no, but I am going to make sure as a professional courtesy that the superintendent is aware. And there may be something that I'm not aware of that's going on. She might say, you know, this teacher, there's some litigation going on, and you might need to be really cautious about your involvement in this situation. But again, it's that balancing act. No surprises. We talked a little bit about protocols. So there's other protocols like visiting buildings. So I don't know if you have something, if somebody wants to visit a building, do you let the building principal know? Do you let the superintendent know? Do you just show up? So, you know, I don't know if we've ever talked about that, although the protocol has been there. And when you have kids in the district, you know, my kids were very involved in sports and in theater and in clubs, and so, you know, even though I want... And so, you know, even though I want to take my Board of Education hat off and fill in as a parent, I'm always going to have my Board of Education hat on. People are going to approach you. They're going to approach you in the grocery store, they're going to approach you at games. And it's okay to say, if someone comes up and wants to talk about, you know, something going on in the district, that, you know, I'd really love to hear what you have to say and to listen to your concerns. Let's schedule a time to do that, you know, not here in the middle of a basketball game.
One of the things I'd like to interject at that point is I know that you, maybe we've talked about this in the past and certainly encountered this in the past and perhaps even Heather, maybe you have, being a board member and having children in the buildings at any point, and for the benefit of Katie, that I always felt it was best to let my spouse handle the interaction if there's, if there's an issue with your child. Because I did, with the best of intentions, did contact a teacher about something and he was very threatened. He felt that I was exerting my, the weight of my role to get my way or to, yeah, something shifted that way. And that was not the intention, but I backed off. It was after that that I learned that you really need to hand it off to your spouse and let them, you know, if everything's all cheery and wonderful, of course, be involved in, you know, with the parent-teacher conferences and all that. But you really have to always be aware that no matter whether you are coming in as a board member or a parent, an employee of the district will always see you as a board member first and foremost.
Well, and it was, you know, when I would go into a building, whether it was, you know, to be a little mom or go on a field trip, you would, it always surprised me how quickly the news spread around the building that a board member was here. And I'm like, I am not, I'm not here to check in on how, you know, you're teaching or...
We have code words in my school.
Is that right?
Everybody respects it. But it's not using the board members, it's using the superintendent.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to.
You don't have to worry about that. I've had a lot of times like visitations for newer board members. If you're not familiar with the buildings, you know, work with us. I'm sure you'd be happy to schedule time for them to tour the buildings and to be at events and to go read at a third grade class, you know, those kinds of things. So it's just making sure that, that there's communication and...
Tracy, something that I feel we've always struggled with is we have people that kind of speak at public participation at Eric and Derby Laundry, but they want to do it at a board meeting and never want to come and talk to us about it in private. We can offer time before every board meeting when there's two board members available for people to come and talk about whatever they want, but they just, they want that time. They want it live streamed, they want it recorded. And we can't answer, we can't give them that information. So it's, it just, it's a struggle. Because then other people are watching and they think that maybe we don't care because we don't answer, but that's not, that's not the way it works.
Well, do you have something to read before public participation that kind of just sets the tone for...
We don't read it, but we have it written. I mean, when they have to sign in on a form, it's, it's up at the table. I mean, they know, they know that we're not going to answer them.
Well, you know, and again, just trying to establish that you're approachable, you're listening to what they have to say, that, you know, if it does get out of hand, you know that you can always adjourn the meeting. You don't want someone to come in and start naming names of students or teachers or violating confidentiality, that'll happen. But, you know, one of the, one of my memories as president of the board, we had a levy that failed, I think in a March timeframe, one year, operating levy. And a lot of really upset people in the community because they knew that there were going to be some program changes and they were concerned that things were going to be cut. And so the very next board meeting, we expected to have a large turnout. We had it at one of our high schools and there were 400 people who showed up, 400 pretty upset, angry, tense people. And that included, and this just, this hurt my heart, I mean, you had the baseball team dressed up in their baseball uniforms, you had the track team, you had the softball team. They just were so concerned that they weren't going to be able to play their sport, that we're going to start cutting that way. But what, what we did is ask, you know, I kind of addressed the elephant in the room, you know, this is a difficult time for our district. We're disappointed as well. We're going to be thoughtful about decisions that are made. We're going to hear what you have to say. And I also ask people to approach their comments with a degree of emotional intelligence and to be able to, you know, think if I, it's hard for me to hear what you're saying to me if you're yelling, if you're being demeaning, if you're being disrespectful. So if you really want me to hear what you have to say, you know, please present it in a way that I can listen and I can hear you and we're not attacking one another. So, you know, it's, it's easy to say, sometimes hard to do. And I also noticed, I was telling somebody else, there are a lot of movies that have bad scenes on Board and Education. That's not fair, is it? Right? But, you know, people want to come and they want the opportunity to take the podium and share, you know, their thoughts, but it's, it's, the public needs to understand also that you're going to hear it, you're going to listen, you're going to hear what they have to say much easier if it's not done in an attacking way. Anything in terms of protocols you want to talk about with giving and receiving information or emergency notification, any of those lines? Well, we have a couple of scenarios as we kind of wrap up here, just to see what your thinking would be in dealing with this situ, these situations. I only have a couple, I think, because I know there are times drawn near. So this is a situation where the district is considering a bond issue for a new high school wing. Board member Sam is opposed because he believes people can't afford it. He's been very vocal about this, but he knows other board members think the new wing is the best call. So how should he and the board move forward? What are your thoughts about that?
Tracy and I just went this past week to a conflict and working together with the board. And there were some exercises, some scenarios similar to this where we as a group had to kind of work out how, how as a board, how do you handle it? And I would say that our answer for, during the week, is similar to what I would say here, which is everybody needs to, as they say in their piece, and speak respectfully, respectfully. And ultimately, you know, it comes down to a vote and what the consensus of the group is and being able to accept that consensus. But you are going to encounter the, the topics that are not far out. And there is going to be a losing side, but the best you can do is be level-headed, talk about the facts and make the decision that's in the best interest of the schools, the district, the students, the budget, you know, because those are where, that's where our focus needs to be.
Very well said, absolutely. If I'm on the, if I'm Sam, I'm going to ask some of these questions, you know? I want to know about the data. I want to know who we've spoken with to help us make the determination that this is needed. I want to understand what we're going to lose or gain if we wait, whether we move forward. And then I also want to understand what can we do once we, we make this decision if it goes the way we think it's going to go? How can we make sure that we are able to share the information that we've researched, that we've considered with our community?
I think one of the things we do well is, one of recent years when we've had an issue on the ballot, it wasn't like all of a sudden one meeting it was announced, okay, we need to vote on a bond issue. I mean, every time it was a process. And so it wasn't like somebody was just finding out for the first time, whether it's the public or a board member. And also Jill's regular financial updates that we receive through email and also at meetings, you know, has us thinking in the back of our head, okay, you know, a couple years. And then, you know, whenever things happen, we go back and forth, try and put it out as much as possible. But we do a good job of it and never be a surprise here.
A lot of districts don't necessarily do that. And I, that was one of the things that I noticed in my district at the time was it, you know, I think what we realized is the communication needs to continue. And I don't like to use the word campaign, but it's a levy campaign, right? So you never stop campaigning essentially. You're always sharing information so people understand where you're coming from and what the needs are, instead of just leading right up to, oh, by the way, we're going to put this ballot, or this on the ballot next year and surprising votes. So then we know after the vote, as we said, majority rules, time to move on to the next decision. Obligation as a board member, whether you support or not, is to support the board and the decision. And there's also other opportunities to see how things are going, you know, monitor it, evaluate it. Maybe you make a decision to go the other way at some point if it's not working, whatever it may be, but stay the course. This is another scenario. So each board member has received an email from community member Doug. Doug tells each board member that he is only writing to them and to him or on the board. He has complained about the band director.
Is he the band director of the football?
That's right. What should each board member do with the email? How do you handle this? What's advisable?
Reply to the sender with CC, the superintendent and the superintendent.
So that everybody knows that it happened and usually forward to the superintendent and then let everybody else know.
And ask, you know, Tracy would be reaching out to you to discuss this further and then Tracy takes it.
They're not getting back different responses.
Yeah, and sometimes that's why, you know, I mean, there's a good chance that they are saying to all of you, I'm only contacting you and you and you and you and seeing what response they get. So transparency, making sure you're all aware of what's happening. So, and then knowing who the district's key respondent is, so either the superintendent or the treasurer or someone perhaps you've delegated, you know, that may have more expertise, you may have delegated to respond to the person. And then I think this is maybe the last one. So board member Deb is a great writer. She'd like to contribute an editorial to the local paper about progress with the district's strategic plan. Should this happen? If so, how?
I think I would, I'm dead. Yeah. I would be talking with the superintendent and our communications director about messaging that the district agrees with. I can just put something out there.
And maybe you're really a great writer and after doing that, you know, you may agree, why don't you draft something? But you want it to come from the whole board as much as possible and you do want to make sure it's aligned with, with the district. So, you know, you've got different skills and expertise that you bring to the board that you might be able to, to contribute. But again, it's using the communication person who's, who's an expert is probably the best approach there. Important when you're out in the public that you realize and remember you're only one individual, your power only comes when you're together as a board. So you have to be cautious about speaking. I, you know, I'd always say, this is me, Kristy Robbins, speaking on behalf of Kristy Robbins. I cannot speak on behalf of the board unless I am authorized to do so. Just kind of to touch on the evaluation piece since we mentioned it, and I didn't include the board, but I can certainly send that along. So five standards that were set by your OSES, Ohio Superintendent Evaluation Standards. And, you know, these are standards against which you can measure the performance of your superintendent. So superintendent's familiar with it. It's good to set expectations upfront, so it's not a surprise. But we're talking about, you know, is there a plan to implement the vision and to focus the work of the district and to focus on continued improvement? How does the superintendent communicate and collaborate? You know, what are some examples of what she's doing well? The areas of policy of governance, instruction and resources are the other standards against which the superintendent is measured. And then the treasurer, there are also five standards that were set by the Ohio Treasurer, by, through Ohio Treasurer Evaluation Standards or OTES. So when it comes to leadership, does the treasurer have like a, a long-term vision for the district? Clearly understand financial management, also responsible, typically responsible for facilities, property and capital asset management. Communication collaboration is one that the treasurer cuts across for the superintendent and the treasurer and then professionalism. And the timeline, you know, we touched on this a little bit, but typically at the beginning of the year, maybe in the July to August or July, September timeframe as the year's about to start, meet with them to establish goals and objectives and to, you know, set the course for the year. The mid-year, you may schedule a meeting, go into executive session, just say, how are we doing? You know, imagine when you went through the COVID situation that, you know, you had goals and objectives that you set maybe in August, but by December or January, you knew that those were going to be pushed aside and we had a whole different scenario to deal with, which is okay as long as everyone understands. And then the summer of board evaluation is really the formal end of your evaluation that takes place between April and June typically. So any questions about that? All right, so really as we wrap up, just, you know, if there are commitments that you can make, you know, with, to one another, one I heard is you're going to revisit, you know, this list of guiding principles and establish some norms for the way that you work with one another. If there are other things, it's important for you to think about doing as a board to make sure that, you know, again, you're working well as a team, that you're collaborative, that you're committed, that you're communicating, that you're consistent, that you are working in the best interest of the district is really what the focus of the board should be going forward. So one suggestion, kind of to leave you with a, with a thought at the end, or at least once a year, maybe during the evaluation process time, the board should ask the superintendent and treasurer, what are the one or two things that we're doing to make your life or your job a little more difficult and what can we do? What are we, you know, it's the old, what's working that we should continue to do? Is there anything you'd like us to start doing? What do we need to stop doing? And then the same with the superintendent, the treasurer of the board, you know, what is it that I'm doing that's working well? What, what do I need to do to make things better for you as a board would be our suggestion. So that wraps us up, that's kind of after. Are there questions or things that I didn't touch on that you're not going to talk about either now or another time?
Can we send you the information from the board's self-assessment?
I will. I will do that. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the chance to meet all of you and I'm sure it's, you're going to do well as a team and great things will be happening in Korea.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you want to go back?
Oh, thank you. No, you can keep those. Not our exercise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, did you come just to come? It's not a regular day.
Yeah, yeah, I just come to talk.
Okay. All right.
Oh, that's a new board member?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Dave.
Hi, pleased to meet you.
I'm the president of the Bus Drivers Union.
Oh, okay.
And my mouth is loud. So I'm not being mean or not, I'm just a loud guy.
Well, nice to meet you. Kristy, did you park in the front or the back?
Uh, she went to the side, so I came in the front.
Yeah. Can, can I, can we take a quick break while she asks?
Yeah, yeah.